All this meeting of the Shasbury Select Board to order on Monday, February 5th, 2024. Does anybody have a kind of interest in anything shown on the agenda?
No.
No.
Okay. The first thing is minutes, and we have minutes from, again, two, three, four, five different meetings.
Right.
I see.
So at the January 2nd meeting, it looks like everyone was there.
Okay.
Any questions? Go ahead.
Entertain a motion to accept?
So moved.
Second by Martha. Second by Naomi. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? So carry 500.
Okay, we have minutes from...
I think there's... Oh, nope, there isn't. Okay.
From the 16th of January. I was not there. Everyone else was there.
So moved?
Second.
Second by Mike. Second by Naomi. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Abstain. I was...
So that's 401.
No, you weren't here?
I was not here.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
We're talking about January 16th.
January 16th.
So is that 402?
Yeah.
Or 302?
302.
302.
302. Thank you.
Thank you for catching that, Naomi. And then we have January 22nd. Art and Naomi, Martha and Mike were there.
So moved?
Moved by Mike.
Moved by Mike.
Second.
Was that a second by?
Marza.
Martha.
Yeah, Martha. All those, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Opposed? And one extension report. That's carry 401.
And then we have one for the 29th.
I don't have that one. Do I?
Oh, is it just a one-page one? Is there something?
Oh, wait a minute. Yes, thank you. January 29th.
It's on the back of that.
January 29th?
Yep.
Looks like everyone was present.
Okay. Entertain a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Naomi?
Second.
Second by Martha. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? So carry 500.
Okay.
Did we do the 18th?
No.
No. Oh, I lost. Here it is. I'm sorry. Yep, it was underneath. Special meeting. Art, Mike, and Martha were there.
Make a motion to approve.
Moved by Mike.
Motion by Mike?
So move, second, sorry.
Second by Martha. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Opposed? Abstain?
Abstain.
Okay. Let's carry 302. Okay, that should do it, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
It's the January.
So you probably have all the warrants there, too.
Yeah. I have a warrant.
I'm going to explain that.
Yeah.
That was a warrant that you guys signed. That was to do an emergency check to Prudential. Between when you signed that and after I mailed the check, I had to void it because they had finally figured out how to do an ACH withdrawal. So I just wanted to get it on the record that 31 was, in fact, voided. The other thing that's there is the postage I had to pay out of my own pocket to get it overnighted to them, and I'm very uncomfortable just writing checks to myself. So I wanted to have it on the record that that is to reimburse me for postage. I did not create a warrant. I will do that now, but I wanted the approval of the board before I even create that warrant, because I don't like writing checks to myself. So we just have you guys, I don't know, just make some kind of a statement that you know that that warrant is coming and it is legit.
And how much is the...
It's just $30.
$30.
So entertain a motion to have Naomi create a warrant for reimbursement, okay?
Yes.
So moved?
Moved by Mike.
Second. Second by Naomi.
And this is maybe not the right time to say this, but I do also want to clarify that in the past, we have had petty cash for things like this, and I hope that we can get that happening again with the new town administrator, because it's silly to have to go through a warrant for every time somebody pays postage for something. Okay, that's my piece.
Thank you.
There's nothing to sign, right?
Nothing yet. No, that's just, you're just telling me it's okay for me to go ahead and create that weird check.
So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Who seconded it? Naomi did.
Thank you.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? So carry 500. Okay, next.
So we have a warrant for number 32 for $21,179.55. Do I have a motion?
Motion. Motion by Mike. Yeah.
Second.
Second by Naomi. Items over $1,000.
We have William E. Daley for $7,023.60. Another one for Daley at $5,443. I think that's it.
I'm sorry, can I interrupt again?
Sure.
You'll see on that warrant, a check being cut for Marlene. That's another one that I want to draw special attention to. That was postage that she had to pay out of her own pocket, so we're reimbursing her for that. These are things that will not happen once we have permanent. So I'm only going to, I'm just going to bring it to your attention when there are these checks that are two people in this building.
You don't have access to a petty cash account at all?
We do not have. Dave Kiernan had sort of let it lapse.
Okay.
And it has not been going for a while, but I, yeah, I think that we need one.
Yeah. There's another one for Appalachian Salt at $5,741. And another one for Daley. No, that's the same one, right? Okay.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So carry 500.
Is that it, Melanie, as far as you know? Is that it as far as you know?
Yeah.
Yeah.
If there's no paper roll, okay, this one. Okay, next on the agenda is announcements. We have the same four requests for special committees. One is the town green. The other one is Corral Hall. We're working on getting that ADA compliant. The sewer feasibility study, there is one person on that who prefers more. And the economic development committee, and this is just the special committee, is that right, Martha?
No, this economic development committee is a standing committee that's going forward.
Yes, yes.
All right, thank you.
So who do we send, who do we send the nominations to?
If it goes to the administrator, it comes to you, your computer, Tony, and then you can send it to whoever isn't, I'm for the sewer, I believe. Naomi is the town green, is that right?
I actually, I thought I was the sewer.
I thought you were the sidewalk.
Well, whatever. Just make sure.
Maybe forwarding.
I'm not the sidewalk.
Oh, okay.
You had, you had control of the documentation piece, I feel it, but not the committee piece.
Oh.
I want to say that Mike was doing this.
But someone else can have it.
Understanding all that was making me a little anxious, so please go.
Okay.
But I think the point is if you just send it to administrator, shasberry.gov, it will get to one of us, okay?
All righty. Thank you.
Public comments? Is there anybody from the public, either Zoom or a person?
Not on Zoom, Art.
No.
Okay. The next is the treasures report, and with the committees or the board's permission, I would like to move number 11, which is the DPW report after the treasures, because what part of the DPW report involves Melanie, okay?
Right.
Yeah, thank you.
We're up for the treasures report now, please.
Okay. Shelley, could you bring up the cash flow that I sent you before?
Give me a sec here.
Sure.
It's a pretty good job, Shasberry.
There it is.
Can everybody see it? No, okay, I need to share it.
It's a little small.
Oops, sorry.
I think there should be, oops, there should be a way to just, from that screen, to Zoom, wherever you were.
Right. Oh, dear. Sorry.
That's...
Well, I'll tell you what you're going to see when you see it. I did finally do the, all the money due to the general fund. I don't know whether you actually saw that. I kept promising to do it. So you'll see that we have a lot more cash in the bank. I mean, it looks like we have more cash in the bank than we did before, because I did finally settle that money that was due from the reserve funds to the general fund. So you'll see that. And not a lot else that we have not already discussed, but if we...
Can nobody see this?
So you go back to Art's screen, and you go to that big screen? Yep, and now press Share Screen.
Right, and...
And it should be that cash flow. Yep, right there. Oh, no. Okay, well. Well...
This is new.
I don't know. Well, Art...
Well, I mean, it's small, but if we could just...
Oh, you did, you did get it. Okay.
Try that one last time, but I think in the end he did see it.
Okay, so...
You have to kind of reopen it from the desktop like you do.
Yeah. And now you're going to go to your Share Screen.
It's like driving a car with drivers.
No, no, you have to go back, I think, to Share.
I think if you just close that, though.
Close that.
That's just the dialogue.
There you go.
There.
Art, can you see that?
I can. I got it.
Okay. Ooh.
Oh, come on.
I think that you have to keep up whatever was, was up there.
Well, I'll also tell you that when we are, when we do see the budget, budget versus actuals, as of the end of January, we are slightly ahead. We're actually at more than 100% of revenue. That's largely because interest has been so, we've talked about it a few times. That's the big variable there. We're also seeing that our spending is slightly behind what it was at this time last year. Last year was, remember, it got a little scary right towards the end of the fiscal year. We ended up being fine, but as of right now, we're looking like we're at about 4% behind where we were last year in expenditures, which is very good to see. And we've got a little bit more cash now than we had at the same time last year. So as far, unless something, you know, something unforeseen happens, we're probably in good shape for the rest of the year. And that's, that's all I was going to say, Shelley, we can...
Not what you're trying to say.
There you go. I mean, there you can see, if you look right there, the, oops.
I'm sorry, folks. You know, it's really frustrating.
I think it's just...
It's a, it's a new thing, and we haven't been able to turn it off. It's coming to all kinds of computers on any of this.
It just says auto closing.
Yeah, that's, that's very bratty. But anyway, it doesn't, it really, I wasn't going to say anything, and you, but all that important, and you have seen 98% of this before. There you see the, that those four, the numbers at the very bottom are what I was talking about. One was a little bit more than 100%. One was, I think, around 64%, whereas the expenditures last year at this time were 67% of budget. So that's all I was saying. And you can peek at it real quick, but...
You want the revenues now?
The reserve account.
Reserve, I'm sorry.
If it's going to do the same thing, it really doesn't matter. It's, all you're going to see is all of those, the opposite side of the transfers from, to, to make the, the general fund whole of all of those, all the money that the reserve accounts owed. So you see a lot of, a lot of motion there. We can take another look at it the next meeting if we want to, but, but that, it's just the other side of the transfer coin is, obviously, it's coming out of the reserves. So you'll see that that, that amount has gone down by the same amount as it went up in the general fund. The other thing that's important, though, is the reason that we really need to have this meeting, is that, that, the blue... So I talked to my bank guy. As of right now, Dave's, Dave Kiernan's name is the only one on the credit card. And what, what that paperwork there will do will be to make me the, I don't remember the technical term for it. It's on the cover letter I had to write. It makes me the primary, it's authorization for me to be the primary card holder, I think. In fact, I am not going to have a card at all. They're going to issue me a card number, but no card. I don't want to have a card. I don't think I should have a card. But that allows me to be the administrator of the, of the credit card. Then I can issue one to Mike, which is what this is actually all about. It's for him to have an emergency card for, for diesel or whatever, when we've got a, a time between warrants, when he really needs to, to take care of some, in a snowstorm or something. So, so it's a couple of step process, but what I need you to do is to read that letter. I need you guys to sign it, and then I will submit all that paperwork to the bank to get the, the primary card holder to be shifted from Dave Kiernan to me. And then I will do the next step, which I can do as, in that role. I can get Mike a town credit card. The other thing this allows me to do is to download the transactions or statements as they happen, so we're not going to be paying any fees, which is something that we've gotten in trouble with because of just the timing of when select board meetings happen. So I'll be able to stay on top of expenditures, so we can pay them in a timely manner. Also, since it's the same bank that we do our banking with, I can do it in the, in the actual, without having to do a bank transfer or anything. I can just pay it right in the branch.
So it says, "To whom it may concern, select board of Shasberry authorizes town treasurer Melanie Dexter to replace former town administrator David Kiernan as the primary card holder on the town credit card issued by M&amp;T Bank. She received a number but no physical card. This will allow her to access online banking, where she may request a new card, put statements, and make payments."
Okay. Entertain a motion to that?
So moved?
Second.
That's a, that's a motion by Mike, a second by Naomi. Discussion? I'd like Mike to just, is Mike there?
Yes.
Just kind of, just kind of describe that we have a credit card with mobile. By the time they send the bill, and then we have a meeting, sign a warrant, check it to them, it's been cut off, because they have such tight control, you know, such tight timing on, it ends up being cut off most of the time. So we probably would not be using the mobile card after we get this. Is that right, Mike?
Yes, that's correct. Yeah, what's happened with the mobile card is because of the meetings, and by the time the check makes it to them, the account just keeps getting suspended. So, and that, we need fuel to run our operation, and it gets frustrating, you know, when the count's suspended. A few times, I've paid out of my pocket so that we could just keep going, and then Dave has got, you know, got it reimbursed, but I want to stay away from that. So I got talking to Melanie and Art about, how about a credit card that we can use for fuel and stuff, and we don't have to go into this problem.
So when you're saying a mobile...
So I have a...
What does that mean? Well, I know mobile oil company, but what kind of system do you have right now?
So, all right. Paul, the town of Shasberry had an account with Paulins.
Okay.
Forever.
Yes.
And you went in there and they wrote...
And they had a little book.
Yeah.
So you were basically...
Well, when they sold...
To Buck Stop.
To, yeah, whoever it is now. We had to get mobile cards. And...
Which is like a prepaid card?
No, it's a credit card.
It's a credit card, okay.
But it's like their statements come out, I don't understa, it's all emailed to me.
Okay.
And the card will be suspended, and then I'll get an email statement, you're past due. And I've called, and Dave has called, and we've tried to figure it out why it's such a lapse, but it's some corporate billing that is not around here, and they don't care that we're just the town. They just want the money.
Right.
So they suspend the count, and then sometimes the, it'll get paid, and I'll hear it in the warrant and everything. The mobile card will get paid, and then it takes a couple days for the check to get there, and it's suspended again.
So it's just back and forth. Okay.
My business has a mobile credit card with Paulins, and it's the same, same way. It's very frustrating. It just doesn't work most of the time.
And with that card, I'm only limited to getting fuel at a mobile station. I mean, yeah, that's the only thing we have in town, but if we go, if I go out of town or something, you got to kind of plan it right.
Right, okay.
Anyways, you know, so...
Can I, can I also just say here that since we do all our banking with this bank, and I have my own team of, of people who I work with, they really want to keep us happy. And he made it clear to me that they would waive any, if, if we were ever in a situation like that, which we won't be, because I'm going to be able to stay on top of it. But when you've got a relationship like we have with them, they're, they're going to want to keep us happy.
Right. So this would be a card to be is not necessarily for emergency purposes, but for fuels mostly, for regular diesel purchases.
Yeah, and then there has been...
And then the occasional...
There has been times where we've need to, needed a part or something, and...
And it was easier to do it that way.
Easier to just buy one.
And then come back.
Yeah, and then get reimbursed for it.
Got it, okay.
Just to get the truck or whatever, going back on. It doesn't happen all the time, because a lot of the vendors are pretty good, but there is that time where, or there's the time where I'll buy a part, but if I had a credit card, I would have paid less for the part than buying it through, you know, somebody else. So there are times where it can save the town money, too.
And it's just going to come a payment right out of the line item of the DPW budget line items?
Yeah, I mean, we're going to have to stay very on top of the paperwork, because it's, it's a more sensitive thing when you're paying with a credit card. So the auditors are going to take a very close look at that. So we'll be, we'll have to be particularly persnickety about that paperwork.
Okay.
So no more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So carry 500. Well, since you're already there, Mike, why don't you give your DPW report?
Okay. The only thing I, I really have is every year, we got to certify our highway mileage. If, we've added Class 1, 2, or 3, or legal trails or anything, and created a new development or something, but nothing's happened. And I just need it signed by the select board, and then I have to have the town clerk sign it, and I just got it emailed in. It's just, it's just saying that we, there's, we leave everything blank because we didn't add anything.
You don't need a motion for that, do you? I don't remember.
We need a motion for the road report.
I think, I think what else, since somebody has to sign it, yes.
Thank you, Melanie.
Thank you, Melanie.
Okay, so entertain a motion to sign the...
Certificate of Highway Mileage.
Right.
Year ending February 10th, 2024. I moved that we sign this, and it has no changes to it.
Unless it was road added, I don't know about.
So if that's a motion by Naomi, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Martha. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
That was the sheet explaining how to fill it out.
So how many signatures? Do you need everybody to sign, or just...
It looks like there's a bunch of lines here. They're kind of...
It doesn't say how many you actually need. It doesn't say it has to be five.
The more the merrier, I guess.
Yeah, then they really know.
We'll leave it just to you.
It's done every year. Usually Dave took, had you guys do it.
Selectmen, aldermen. Got to update these forms. Our ladies on board.
Do you know what alderman means, old person?
What?
Alderman means old person.
It's an elder.
Etymologically, yeah.
That's a state of the mind.
Thank you.
Okay.
I will email that.
Oh, the credit card?
Yeah, okay. So that's just part of our file.
Yeah, that was the two things, was the card and the mileage. And then I have some more stuff that needs to be signed, but we got to wait until after the budget gets passed to fill everything out for the financial plan and all that, that's done with the state. So that'll be sometime in March. When the road crew, we were just, we've been just maintaining equipment and...
Waiting for snow.
Waiting for snow. Spread gravel on some roads that had some bad potholes. Sugar mill was really bad.
It was.
Yeah, it did. It kicked in really good.
Yeah.
Got a couple more. We've been doing it early in the morning when it's still kind of frozen, and then just... of frozen and then just getting off the roads when it starts to thaw out. So we're not making more ruts and holes, so.
Makes sense.
And then we have a bunch of trees to go around, clean up from all those blow downs from the last couple windstorms. So that's what we'll be working on. Waiting for snow, if it comes. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Art. So number eight is the spinning ordinance. This is really, this is an ordinance that we informed the town that this was put together by the planning commission and that we have to have a meeting on it three times and then after a grace period, if nobody comes up with a petition, it goes into effect. So is that on a screen someplace where we can?
Well, let's hope so.
Okay. If not, I think Naomi or Martha could explain it briefly.
Well, I think actually.
Yeah, I think you have to X that thing out in the lower corner there first, the box there.
Thank you, Mike.
I think what we need to have there is the.
Excuse me.
The timeframe.
We need, we also need to talk about the timeframe part, right?
Yeah.
And I left unclear who was going to research that. I don't remember.
You mean the timeframe for a public meeting?
The public hearing.
For a public meeting. Art, do you remember what our timing is on this? When we have to have?
No, I don't.
We didn't know.
No, I don't. Somebody said that maybe there's a certain period between the three different meetings that we have to have and they were going to look it up, but we can check with the VLTC on that and if there has to be a, a certain number of days between each hearing.
Yeah.
I'm trying to see if I can.
The minutes from a meeting of January 29th said simply, "A discussion of the ordinance adoption timetable will be placed on the agenda for February 5. Select persons will familiarize themselves with the rules meanwhile."
Yeah.
Well, there you go.
Art, will you check with the VLTC?
I will.
Okay.
I'll send them, send them an email and just ask them what the, what the timing is for ordinances and that sort of stuff, okay?
Okay.
Thanks.
All right?
Martha's trying to look it up right now.
And I may be able to find it because our, Dave has definitely sent it to us in the past. That's.
Yeah.
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, agenda number nine is the.
Oh, that's.
Is it a chance for us to sign up for, I guess, a grant to put electric vehicle charging stations in Shasbury? There was some talk about whether this would conflict with what is going, was in the agreement with, that we have with Shasbury Solar or also where there are certain restrictions placed on us that somebody had to maintain it all the time and that sort of stuff. Do we want to go ahead and look into the possibility of doing this at this point?
So it's my impression that there's no reason to think it should conflict with what we would hopefully get from Shasbury Solar. It would just be more, more charging stations and that's great because in another 10 years.
Yeah.
There's going to be an enormous need. And.
It also seems like we would be in a good stead to get it from just what I had just briefly researched because there are no EV charging stations in the town of Shasbury as far as I know at this moment. So, and it is very much about putting them in places that are underserved, but also in places that are going to be kind of public gathering places. And so I think that we could make a good case that this town community center, town green hub that we're working on, it would be very much in line with that. So there's a pre-application that has to be done before February 29th. And then there's a pre-screening call where somebody, I'm assuming, would call whoever is going to put in this application. And then if you kind of pass muster through that pre-screening call, then submit a full application. And it seems like it is a very tight turnaround because the grant awards are possible by this summer. So it's, it seems very quick.
Okay.
As, as far as I could tell.
It seems to me that the questions about whether the town would be paying for it or whether individuals would be paying for it on a charge point or whatever.
Right.
Are things we would find out as we went forward in the grant application, but probably we would have some choice about that matter. Bennington, you know, Bennington as a town offers it for free.
Is it really?
It does, yes.
Oh, okay.
But that doesn't mean we have to.
Yeah.
But it's the same charging station.
Yeah.
But whether it's free or not, so.
So then I guess the question is, because we don't currently have a town administrator, who would likely would do this, who is going to do the pre-application if we're pondering putting this out into the world? I haven't seen, I haven't seen the application. I don't know.
I think it's sold under the economic development.
I mean, so, right. I mean, we'll see. I, I mean, I can certainly try to put in and see what it involves, how in-depth it is. I have no idea how big this pre-application is or not.
How about you and I work on it together?
That sounds like a good plan.
Okay.
Have a little subcommittee of.
If people are willing to put that in our hands.
Sure, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so I, I guess we, we'll, we'll probably have another meeting before it's due in. Is that not right? Do you, do you want us to approve it now or you look into it and then we'll approve it at our next meeting?
Want to give us the information?
I think we should, we should put in the pre-application because I think that it probably will be a competitive thing. And then if we get to a pre-screening call, then we know that we've done something right and then maybe come back and report.
Okay.
I think would be the best way to do it.
So what, so, so let's, somebody make a motion that, that Martha or Martha and Naomi put in the pre, pre-screening application. This is just a pre-screening. That doesn't lock us in. It just has put us on the list. Is that right?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, so moved?
That's a move by Mike?
Second.
Second by Tony. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? So carry, five zero zero. Thank you.
And just, just for the meeting notes, I just want to say that it's a pre-application for the Charge Vermont EV program, just for the meeting minute notes.
Okay, thank you.
Is this a multi, is there, you know, I'm not familiar with the charging station. Is there one charger for every type of electric vehicle or is there one charge for everything?
I, I think it's a generic charger, except for Teslas. But the apps that are used to pay.
Okay, okay.
Different. And that's one of the problems that they haven't worked out.
All right, okay.
But the apps are not built into the charger as far as I understand it.
No, no, okay, good.
Next on the agenda is public awareness of the fact that the town is, has a contract to purchase the building right behind Coal Hall. It's a old Victorian-style house that is right behind Coal Hall. A lot of people don't even know it's there because it's hidden by the trees and all that sort of stuff. So we are planning to buy this with ARCA money, so it does not need a vote of the townspeople. But we do want to make the townspeople aware that this is a contract that is going to be completed on April 15th. So we have plenty of time to let people know about it. So if anybody has a, has any opinion about, you're welcome to bring it up at public announcements or whatever at any of our meetings. But we've agreed in the past to have at least three notifications of when we're buying purchases like this. So what we did on the shed out beside Coal Hall and so that we'd like to do with that with this also. Any other comments, or anybody on that?
And the purchase price?
$190.
$190, okay.
Okay. I guess we can go on to other business. Does anybody have any other business? I received an email from Jack Bauer this morning, who is the, one of the engineers working on Coal Hall remodeling, whatever you want to call it, bringing ADA compliant. And he had put out an RFP for, for a contract manager to manage this. This isn't somebody that's going to, they could if they wanted to actually do it, but it's a little bit complicated. A contract manager manages all that for a certain percent fee of the total project cost. And nobody bid on it. He got a couple, a couple people wanted clarification. He gave it to them and they both said that basically the project not big enough. It's $750,000.
Right.
But it just, it just doesn't catch anybody's attention.
Wow.
So, Naomi, you probably haven't read the emails, but he sent something to you this afternoon proposing to probably meet with you on the green.
Oh, yes, okay.
Why did that not come to me?
Because it's about the town green and I'm the liaison for that.
Okay, yeah.
I'll send it to you.
Yeah, okay.
I'm sorry.
Maybe, maybe we can put it all as a bigger package. Don't know. He answered me and I, I only skimmed through it before I had to come to this meeting, so I don't quite understand it. But it is basically a little bit on hold until we can decide how we want to go forward on this. Just to let everybody know, okay? It's kind of disappointing, but even a, almost three quarters of a million dollar project doesn't, but these are big companies that he was asking to. And I did receive some communication about Grandview is going to be brought to the public. The engineering study is done and that'll be brought to the public sometime in April. Any other business? Other business?
We all set for town meeting day and I've heard questions about potluck. People asking, are we not still?
Well, I'm in communication with Karen and she's, and she's, I've got the North Chap.
Lyons, that's right. You said that the last meeting, okay.
And a few other people, so.
And, and we're thinking 5:00 PM for the?
5:00 PM.
Okay.
Yeah.
For the potluck.
I'm gonna, I'll, I'll email Jeff to make sure because I haven't heard back. I sent the application in and he was going to include the sound system and that.
Okay.
So Karen was in DC, so I couldn't get.
Got it, okay. That makes sense.
So I told her that we would meet after when she got back.
Okay, good. Well, that's good. People will be very happy about having a potluck.
Yeah.
They're clamoring for it.
Oh, I know, I know. I just got an email from Carl and his, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's a thing we really just want to announce every time we can.
Right, that, that there will be a.
So there will be a potluck before town meeting on January, on March 4th, yeah.
Good news. Thank you.
Yes, thanks for organizing.
Well, I'm.
We're gathering.
Gathering, yeah.
When do we put out the sidewalk, the sandwich board announcing town meeting? Could it go on the sandwich board?
I bet we probably could.
Yeah.
That's a great idea.
I'll talk to Marlene about that.
Yeah.
Excellent idea.
Thank you. I think she put it in, did she put in the warning?
I just got a postcard, but I don't remember if on that postcard that I read that there was going to be a potluck on the card that just came to my mailbox.
It's, it's on the annual report. I don't know about the warning.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, great.
Anything else? Reveal to action items? I guess Melanie is going to apply for a credit card to be used by the DPW. Martha is going, Martha and Naomi are going to work on the charging application for the charging station. What else is there?
You're going to check with the Vermont League on the timing of the ordinance.
That's right.
Right.
That's my job, yeah.
And I'll talk to Marlene about the sandwich board.
Okay. Okay, anything else? I guess we have got to quite a bit of business under executive session for both, both of them all. So entertain a motion to go into executive session.
So moved?
Moved by Martha, or not only, moved by Naomi, sorry.
Second, please. Second?
Second by Mike. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? So carry, five zero zero. Tell CAT TV there probably won't be any action taken afterwards, okay?
Yeah.